This is. This is Terry Lineback, Chairperson of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Board of Directors, calling this regular meeting on January 19, 2022, to order at 6:35 PM. Thank you for joining us on Zoom this evening. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment on items as they are heard. We will be following some procedures to keep this meeting running smoothly. For all participants, please mute your microphone or phone when you're not speaking. You may have to unmute your own microphone in order to speak. We will follow the order of the posted agenda. Each item will follow the same process. The clerk will announce the item, staff will present, the chair will ask the clerk if there is any public comment. The chair will ask each member, board member, in the same order for their comments or questions, and all votes will be roll call. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the pledge this evening. I'd like to welcome Tyler Ebonoff. And following the pledge, Supervisor Nina Siner will say a few words. So Tyler, go ahead, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good job, Tyler. Okay, good evening. So I have the pleasure of introducing, introducing, excuse me, Recreation Coordinator Tyler Ebonoff. Tyler started with the district in July of 2021. Tyler oversees all youth and adult sports programs, classes, and leagues throughout the district. In addition, Tyler helps with all operations at the Mather Sports Center. Tyler came highly recommended from the city of Folsom, where he worked part-time for about two and a half years. Tyler graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo with about, excuse me, with a bachelor's degree in recreation, parks, and tourism and administration. He obtained his master's degree in sports administration at Arkansas State University. And a couple of fun facts about Tyler, he is an avid Bay Area sports fan, so much so that he jumped into a cold pool after the 49ers' recent victory. Tyler is an extremely positive person and has just been such a pleasure to work with, and I look forward to his continued success here at the district.
Thank you very much, Tyler. And Nina. Okay, if we could have a roll call now, please.
Director Sloan?
President.
Director Denzel?
Here.
Secretary Yearwood?
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Here.
And Chair Lineback?
Here. Okay, so now we are on to board disclosures on action items. Do any members of the board have any disclosures? We will start with Director Sloan.
I have none.
Director Denzel?
None.
Secretary Yearwood?
None.
Vice Chair Reyes?
None.
And I have none. Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to Item C of the agenda, the consent items, consent calendar.
I believe we're on Item B for public comment.
Excuse me, I'm still getting used to all this Zoom and paper and everything. So now we are on to public comments for items not on this agenda.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff.
And do we have any public comments for non-agenda items?
I only see one, and that is actually to celebrate the birthdays of Vice Chair Reyes and Director Sloan.
Okay. It's not fair. There should be delivery of a cake, come on. This happened last year.
Hey, if it's a virtual meeting, you get a virtual cake.
We're gonna add.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
We have to also add to it as well, our Parks and Recreation Director Jill Nuns is also a January baby. So we'll include her in the operatic version of Happy Birthday.
Okay, everybody mute your microphones. Okay.
All right, here, let's go. On the count of three.
Okay.
One, two, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you.
I hear you, Andrea.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Thank you.
That was about the worst I've ever heard. No, that wasn't too bad.
That was pretty bad, guys.
Wait till you have time to polish it.
Mine's this Saturday. When is the other ones?
Saturday.
Are you, are you the 22nd, Rick?
Yeah.
So am I. Oh, my God. Oh, we go through this every year. Several years later.
And Jill?
I'm the 28th.
Ah.
She looks like she's the babe.
Are we all Aquarians?
I am.
I am. Yeah, we are.
How about that?
From the 20th, I think.
That's why I like you, too.
Got it.
Okay. Now, we will move on to Item C, the consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have six items for your consideration.
Okay, does anybody would, and does anybody have any questions or would like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Shall we start with Director Sloan?
Yeah, you know what? I, I'd like to discuss, I think it's a C4. The tennis courts, tennis courts.
All right. Director Denzel?
None.
But Secretary Yearwood?
None.
Vice Chair Reyes?
None.
And I have none. So would we want to entertain a motion on the other five items first and then go to Item C4?
Chair Lineback?
Well, do we need to do that? Can't we have a discussion without pulling an item?
We can.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah. Um. Well, let, since the motion's been called for, why don't we do that? I, I heard a motion by Vice Chair Reyes, a second by Director Denzel. Is that correct? Okay, so a roll call vote, please, on Item C1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Director Sloan?
Hi.
Director Denzel?
Hi.
Secretary Yearwood?
Hi.
Vice Chair Reyes?
I.
Chair Lineback?
I. So we will move now to Item C4. Director Sloan?
Yeah, um. I know it's been a long time that I've been asking for, you know, tennis courts to be fixed. And I know that you guys have attended some type of a re, a resurfacing veneer type process. And that sounds good to me, as long as you can have a nice green court or whatever color, and it have, you can see the lines. And I know that we're, this is for Larchmont. I was wondering if there is some type of a, a business plan that we have that will include, have you, you, you've assessed each tennis court and which ones need the, the most work? So you're doing those first? So I wanted to know when the Riviera East tennis courts might be on that list. That's, that's basically it. I wanted to discuss it. And what you heard about this veneer process.
I'm going to turn it over to Jill for her deep dive into this, and Laura also, and Matt, actually, that's been a team approach to this. So Jill, if you wouldn't mind, if you want to talk about this experience and kind of our direction going forward.
I'll let Laura Taylor get into the details about the products. She might know a little bit more than I do at this point, and Matt's played on it, so he can give you some idea about the surface. For the renovation of our tennis courts, we have gone around to every single one of our locations that, that, that does have tennis courts. And we have put a list together of the priorities for renovations and repairs. And Riviera East is not next up, but it's up after Lincoln Village. So we feel after Larchmont, Lincoln Village tennis courts are probably next in the queue. Then comes, it's Riviera East, and then White Rock after that at this point. Eagles Nest will get a resurfacing this year because it's a, a good point where we can resurface Eagles Nest without putting a lot of money into actually repairing cracks within the surface. And that's something that's an industry standard, that if we can keep up with resurfacing and filling in smaller cracks and then repainting, basically, the surface, that's what we want to try to do, to stay ahead of the game, so that we don't get to the point where we are with Larchmont, with Riviera East, with Lincoln Village, and so forth. So Riviera East is high on the list. It is on our capital improvement projects list for tennis courts that need to be renovated. The other thing that we would like to wait for is this new surface that we are going to use at Larchmont and see how we like it, right? So it's gonna, Larchmont is, we, we believe in the product, we believe that the product is going to work. We've all tested out the product by going over to, you know, another park that has this product surface installed. And oh, Christina's on the line, she can, or on this Zoom, she can talk about it as well. So we're confident that, that the surface will be a, a solid surface for people to play tennis and pickleball. So our thoughts with Larchmont is, is that we would keep the two tennis courts, and then we would overlay pickleball lines on top of that, similar to what there is there now. Obviously, we have pickleball lines at Larchmont, so we will get with the community and make sure that they are in favor of us continuing with pickleball lines. So I'll pong it to either Laura or Christina to talk a little bit more about the actual, or Jim Morales, about the service.
Before you, I want to, I want to clarify, so the parks that have, the tennis courts have two courts. One is going to be tennis courts, and there's going to be two pickleball courts in there?
No. So, um, so for Larchmont, I'll speak to Larchmont right now and Eagles Nest. So both Eagles Nest and Larchmont have two tennis courts. We, they will stay tennis courts, so both of them will be full tennis courts, and then we'll overlay the pickleball lines. So they won't be true pickleball courts, because pickleball will be using the tennis courts similar to the lines that are actually out at Riviera East.
Right, 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 right.
So it's similar to what you guys have there, that someone painted on Riviera East, it'll be similar. We do have dedicated pickleball courts in the queue, where they will just be pickleball courts, which then have the, the actual net size that pickleballers prefer.
No, I think that, that is genius, that you're doing that. I think it's only like a, a four-inch difference in height or something, so.
It's not much, yeah.
It doesn't really matter, because you still have to hit it over the net, that's all, just like in volleyball.
And it's really hard when, yeah, and it's really hard when you have a tennis court next to a pickleball, especially if that tick, that, that pickleball is turned, because then you're going to have, you know, balls on each other's court, so, yeah.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
Well, the other, the other piece, Jill, if you wouldn't mind, um, talking a little bit about the process we took for Eagles Nest in terms of getting out to the community. Instead of just assuming we're really trying to get feedback from the community before we add an additional pickleball component, but if you can talk a little bit about that, would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So for Eagles Nest, when we knew that we had the funds to resurface those tennis courts, we, Shelby, put out a survey to the Eagles Nest residents, basically through the Anatolia Clubhouse, as well as we put informational flyers up on the tennis courts and the basketball courts, and had people go online and take a survey, asking them if they were interested in the tennis courts being tennis courts, but then having the overlay of the pickleball courts on top of it. And it came back very, very favorable to yes, go ahead and resurface the courts, overlaying the pickleball lines on top. I don't think there was one person who was against it. Everybody was very supportive. I think we got, what did we get? Shall we like 10 responses?
I believe so.
That's right.
Yeah.
So it'd be like white lines and blue lines, something like that?
Correct. I don't know the exact, uh, the colors. Jim and I will, will pick those colors out after we award the contract. But right now, we have not picked out the colors, but they will be two different color lines, correct?
Same thickness?
I'm sorry?
Same thickness as the other ones?
Yes. So, yeah, so, so Eagles Nest will be your true tennis court surface, just like it is right now. It's not going to be the new material.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's going to be a regular, like, Harry Lending at Eagles Nest right now. That'll be the same surface of the new, of the new resurfaced courts at Eagles Nest.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of great informational videos out, uh, talking about pickleball, that maybe you could send to some of these, uh, you know, homeowners associations, or they can share that with, with members and stuff, so. It's fantastic, once you see it, how it, the invention of it, how it started all.
So Christina or Laura, do you want to talk about the, a little bit about the surface, or Jim Morales can as well?
I'll just talk about the two real bonuses from my perspective, and then I'll turn it over to Christina and, or Jim Morales, whoever wants to add to it. But basically, this new product, it's really great when you have some limited cracking on your subsurface. And it could, because it spans the cracks, and the cracks won't telegraph up through onto your new acrylic surface. And, um, so that's a real, that could be a real money saver. The other thing about it is that it has last, lasted very, very well at the sites that we went to see it at. And I can't remember the name of the park, but I'm sure that Christina or Jim Morales remember it. But it's, it's held up very, very well. And so it, it looks very promising. So that's all I have.
Hey, Matt, you played on it?
Yeah, I've gone, it's in Mission Oaks, the park, and the surface looks fantastic, and it was installed, we've eight years prior to that. So it held up for eight years. And it's different, and it's actually softer on the knees and the, and the legs, just because you're, it's like a floorboard. And it sounds different when the ball hits the surface, but the play is fine, the play.
So it doesn't, doesn't affect the bounce of the ball?
I don't think so. I won that day, so I liked it a lot.
It, it's slight, it's like, it's really, it's light, just slight, it's just slight, not a bunch.
Well, I think that's fantastic. Thank you for this information.
The Titan Tracks website has some really good images of what that product looks like, Director Sloan.
Titan, T-I-G-H-T-E-N.
Tracks, and I believe in the staff report, I wrote the name of the product. It's, it's like Laura said, it's, it's like a membrane, almost like gauze. So it overlays the, the, the base court.
Interesting.
Not a system we could use for a place like Rosemont, where the cracking is, is too deep. Is a site where we were able to use this particular.
But it has a texture?
It has a texture, yeah. But, but then the acrylic goes on top of that membrane, so it's a layered system.
Good, I have a question. I mean, I, I try to stop it whenever I see it, but a lot of times, those areas, the tennis courts, kids are riding skateboards in there and bicycles, and is this surface going to be affected by those types of treatments? What do you think?
I think no more than the exist, than the existing acrylic-type surfaces.
Okay. Good. That's great. I think it's fantastic. Anything will be better than what we have.
So, um, so can we have a motion on item, consent item C4 then?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt C, uh, C4 on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you, Director Sloan, in a second.
Second.
A second from Director Denzel. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Hi.
Director Denzel?
Hi.
Secretary Yearwood?
Hi.
Vice Chair Reyes?
I.
Chair Lineback?
I. Okay, so now, I think we move on to our, the staff's favorite item of the year, a presentation by staff on the 2021 year in review.
Thank you. I'll invite CFO Goodell to present.
All right. So this year's recap for 2021 is titled, Who Are We? And it was a challenging year, but we did overcome all those obstacles. At one point, staff was asked to submit a word or words that they felt was at the heart and core of exactly who we were. And so you're going to find those words throughout this presentation and all the pictures that were from this year, and there's also some pictures from previous years as well. Now, I have to give a disclosure. I did just watch the 1980s classic, The Breakfast Club, right before I put this together, okay? So if you saw The Breakfast Club, you'll appreciate this video a little bit more. It's, it's still pretty good, but you'll understand when you see it, okay? It's more like an essay written in detention class on a Saturday than it is a story or a poem, so just to let you know that. All right, so with that, everyone, please mute your mics and enjoy this five minutes worth of 2021. Who are we?
Dear those that are watching this, we accept the fact that we sacrifice every day, even on a whole Saturday, whether we're in the office while in the parks, at one of our facilities, with our communities, for we are all dedicated. Who are we? Yeah, maybe it was. And well, other basket cases. You see us as a princess. As proud park services. As recreation providers. As planners and thinkers preparing for our future. Who are we? We are award winners. You see us as people. Serving others. And proudly supporting our community. Does that answer your question? Sincerely yours, the Cordova Recreation Park District.
Just wow. I, I have to say I got the chills at the end there. Excellent, 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 Matt. Thank you.
Yeah, it was fun to put together.
No, Matt, I, were you playing guitar in that?
That is my guitar playing. Yes, it is.
I thought so. I almost thought of Pulp Fiction there in the beginning. I guess, I guess you couldn't get Morgan Freeman, right?
Yeah, he was busy, so it had to be my voice, unfortunately.
Alistair Cook or whatever, the guy from the earth. That's fantastic.
And I think that was the best one we've seen. It was just incredibly thoughtful and, and really kind of makes you look back during this really challenging time of COVID last year. And it's remarkable what the staff has done with all of those additional challenges.
Can we get copies of that?
Incredible.
It should be on our web.
Yeah, it'll be on our website.
It should be on our web.
But can we get the actual link? Is it a, is it a PowerPoint or what is it?
No, it'll be an MP4, whatever it's called.
But maybe we'll have the board go down the list and we can have you guys comment if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense. So we, Director Sloan.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, it was an excellent job. It was, you know, like Patrick said, it almost, it brings a tear to your eyes of our accomplishments of what we've done in this, in the, you know, when something comes against us, we, we fight and, and hold our ground and achieve great goals. And I just liked the way the, the pace of it too, Matt, was one where you can really kind of relax and take a deep breath. Because it just, it's, you wanted to take in every moment of it and, and I appreciate you doing that. I know it's, it's a lot of work, finding the right photographs and syncing it to the music and all. I'm just really proud of what we've done here. And I look forward to 2022 as even being just as productive, if not more, if that's possible. Thank you.
Director Danzel.
Um, once again, Matt, well, well, well done on that. Yeah, definitely. I agree with some of the board members. That needs to be up on, you know, websites, social media, everywhere we could possibly get that. I actually called my wife in to watch it because she's working on score with Dakota, but I broke her away for that just because they're always, always good to watch. I kind of forget sometimes that, you know, I know Matt plays guitar, but I forget he's got a true creative side other than just his number side. And I'm, you know, I like seeing those because it's the time where we can see us as, you know, the board, the staff, the community without numbers. And it's, it's exactly that. It's who, who we are and what we've, what we've accomplished as a team and what the community has helped us accomplish. So, thank you.
Uh, yes, Secretary Yearwood.
Yeah, it was just all right for me. Little pitchy dog. Sorry. Anybody know what that's from? No, it was very well done, as usual. I was looking forward to a poem, though. Maybe you could still write one up for me. You know, expectations have been set in years previous, but no, well done. I agree with what everyone said so far. It's always kind of nice just to look back and think of all the things we've done this year. The pool, of course, being kind of the crowning achievement of the year. And it was nice to be able, as I said, I'm not a fan of being back in front of this iPad, but it was nice to get out there and see folks and do things. So, well done. Again, looking forward to another great year. See which movie you're going to plagiarize next year. But that is all.
Vice Chair Reyes.
I really enjoyed it. I thought it was awesome. And you know what was really neat about it, Matt, was the faces. I mean, the faces, you had a lot of faces, of people, of kids, you know? I think that's real important. You know, and I like, I like the way it really brought back because we get an award, we say yay, thank you, and then we're on to the next. It's like even for staff and all, it's on to the next. And so that was a really nice, calm way to take it in. But I love the picture because our community is so diverse. And to see it all that way, I mean, every picture, you know, had different, you know, ethnicities and genders and all that. And it was really nice age. You put in the age, you put in kids, you put in teenagers. It was good. And yeah, I'd love to have a copy of that or at least be able to tell people to check it out because you know what? That's who we are. And we've been trying to find a way to be able to say it without just having to go through numbers. You know? Thank you.
And yeah, so now I have to try and say something different than has been said so many times already. But it was, it was really excellent. And it does show the face of the district and the humanity, the people who work and play and the people who use our, you know, facilities. And they do range throughout the community. And I think that's really important to show. And it was just an excellent job. And, you know, as I was watching it, I was thinking exactly what Vice Chair Reyes said, it needs to go up. And Director Danzel, it needs to go on our social media, Facebook webpage. Because it, it means more than the numbers, you know? I mean, we have to watch the numbers. That's our job, but for, for the public, I think is a great way to see what the district does. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you. Yeah, when I was looking for inspiration for this year, I, I took all the words that staff submitted and they were so selfless. And so it was easy to use pictures of the programs and the kids and the, and you know, the adults and the seniors that use our programs and you know, just to see us at work and everything like it just directs who, it's who we are. And so that was, I quickly came together. And then, like I said, I watched Breakfast Club and there was my essay, so.
I guess I'm going to have to watch Breakfast Club. It looks very unique to me.
Matt, maybe next year you can take into consideration our furry friends.
Well, I was thinking about Squid Games. It's the next trending.
Okay, maybe not Squid Games. All right, let's move on to item E, well, committee reports of which there are none. So now we move on to our public hearing today.
Thank you, Chair Lineback. Item F1 is public hearing number one, an introduction to the districting process and receive public input on the composition of voting districts for a potential transition from at-large to by-district elections for the Board of Directors. Pursuant to the California Voting Rights Act, no action will be taken by the Board at this meeting.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:09 PM. And we will begin with a presentation on this item.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our consultant, Matt, Matt Rexroad from Redistricting Insights.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to try to share my screen here. I go to a lot of public meetings and I have to tell you, it's not too often that I get singing and, and a slideshow included. So nice work for you all. And actually, I was looking at your faces during the slideshow and almost every one of you was smiling very widely. So good on you for that. That's cool. So can everyone see my screen? It's just a cover slide right now. So I can, I'll look, I can see Danielle and a couple of you right now, not all of you. And so I can talk about redistricting forever. So Danielle will give me the slash throat or something when she wants me to move along very quickly through this process. But the intention tonight is to kind of give, give you not only today, and, but then again, on Monday, when we meet virtually to talk through the overall process of redistricting and then get some of your thoughts on ideas that you might have and give the opportunity for the public to share their views as you go through. And I keep saying redistricting, but it is districting for you all for the first time. So you're not redistricting. You're going to elections. So as I'm sure you know, you have at-large elections right now and all of you were elected at large. And under the potential litigation of the California Voting Rights Act, you're at least considering going to district elections where you're divided up by geographies within the the boundaries of your district. And so just wanted to make sure that everyone's operating under the same understanding that district elections are obviously very different. The people who would vote for you or your successors would be only those people that lived within those district boundaries. So some people say, well, why district elections? And I'm not going to advocate for or against them, but overall, the pros of district elections and why many people advocate for them are basically geographic diversity. So you end up with people from all different parts of a community. In a past life, I was the mayor of Woodland, California, where I live, and I'm talking to you from right now. And all of our council members, we all live within like a quarter mile from each other. And that was a problem. And one of the reasons that we actually went to district elections in my city. The other part of it is, is that historically, and the reason for the creation of the California Voting Rights Act is minority representation hasn't been as great in areas where you have district-wide elections where it's across the whole special district or across the whole city. You're much more likely to end up with minority representation when you go to district elections. There's also lower barriers, barriers to entry. It's much easier to campaign in a smaller district going door to door. You don't have as much expense for your campaign. And a lot of people think that that moves, it moves the board closer to the people by having people from the geographic spread, lower barriers to entry and increased minority representation. So the California Voting Rights Act is different than the Voting Rights Act that we're going to talk about a little later. But basically, if, if any entity can threaten a lawsuit against you and claim that there's improved, there's racially polarized voting. And by the way, there's racially polarized voting in almost every community in California I've looked at, where members of one race vote predominantly for one candidate or another, and you can prove it statistically. The remedy in the law is to force, in those cases where you have at-large elections, to force district elections. Doesn't say exactly how the districts should be drawn, other than complying with the Voting Rights Act, the Federal Voting Rights Act. But it just says that districts, going to districts is the remedy for that legally. So as you're going to, to district or redistrict, and, and the reason I have this slide here and the reason this is important is as you're going through this process, there are, and the California Fair Map Sac and Prop 11 and Prop 20 don't directly apply to you as a special district. But what you should understand is there is an expectation in California right now. The state process, the state redistricting commission just went through their process. It was very open and transparent. A lot of local governments are moving to redistricting commissions to create their districts. And that creates an expectation that the public can observe, watch the process and even be involved in the processes as they go forward. And so that's openness and transparency is the expected process that you go through during districting or redistricting in California right now. Really quickly, a lot of people use the terms redistricting and/or districting and reapportionment interchangeably. And they're not the same thing. When you all are done here, you're going to end up with, you're not going to reapportion and end up with seven Board of Director seats. You're going to end up with five. So you're going to do districts. Reapportionment is just reapportioning the House of Representatives among the different states. And so that's only happens once a decade, very quickly. As soon as the populations are released from the Census Bureau to the House of Representatives clerk. This is, did somebody have something? I heard something. Did somebody have a question? Okay. This is an old, famous redistricting cartoon and it's called, under the Gary Mander, which is after the governor of Massachusetts and, and from years ago. And this, this is a, basically, I don't know what this is, some sort of crazy looking salamander bird type thing that they described this strange district that was drawn to basically do congressional redistricting. And so that's a famous cartoon as we look for some of the principles of redistricting, which we're going to talk about here next. So in every districting or redistricting process, there's an order of criteria that need to be considered. The first is population equality. And we're going to go through each one of these in a little bit of depth. But the first is population equality. The next is complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And those things are largely a numerical judgment, so very objective. The Federal Voting Rights Act can be a little complicated, but basically you have to comply with it. And we'll, we'll talk through some of those things. But then you start talking about communities of interest, which is the next thing. And communities of interest is all things to all people. I've heard people argue about their community of interest being airports. I've heard people make the statements about dog parks and places of worship, all kinds of things. We even had somebody argue in Los Angeles 10 years ago that the LAX community of interest was very real, even though people don't live there. And that baggage claim couldn't possibly be separated from where people land on the airplane. And I don't know why that made a big difference, but they were making that argument in their community of interest. But nobody's wrong on that. And sometimes you have to weigh different things to be able to consider how you balance out population equality. School district lines are important. It can be anything. And for you all, it may be distance from park facilities or whatever that might be. It could be anything, but nobody's wrong. It's just people have different values. Compaceness, generally you want the districts, everyone, generally, your, your district's a little bit different because it is very compact. But oftentimes people say, well, they want districts to be perfect squares or rectangles. And the geography of California is just not like that. And so it's, and when we start balancing the population equality, sometimes you do get some strange districts, shapes. And then finally, contiguity. You can't have districts that are, are patches of districts all spread throughout an area that aren't contiguous and touching. They all need to be together in one spot. So just to talk about population equality, and this is just an example to give you an idea. In my hypothetical here, it's a district of about 100,000. And it's actually not too far off from yours. Your, your actual population is 127,000. But you don't have to get exactly down to the person for population equality. Your district, a special district, gets 5% on either side of the mean. So in that case, your district has 127,854 people. When we divide by five, that's 25,570 people in each district as an ideal population. Well, that's the mean and you get 5% on either side of that. And that's because you don't want to end up with just having two houses separated from their community of interest, just to get population equality right on point. You want to have some flexibility to be able to keep neighborhoods together, to keep different communities of interest together and have a good reason for that. So in this example, anyway, in my hypothetical, the, the perfect number would be 20,000. If all of them had 20,000, the population deviation would be zero. But in this case, in, in our district, we would have one district with 21,000. And you can see the populations here. And when we talk about population deviation, this plan that would be represented, a map that this would represent, the total population spread would be 8.75%, 5% positive over and 3.75% under. So the total spread would be 8.75%. And you get 10. The closer to zero you can be, the better, but it doesn't have to be exactly zero. You just have to have a good reason. And there are a couple of areas. One area that I was working in, in Butte County, those of you may be familiar with what happened in Paradise here a few years ago, right? They have a pretty compelling reason that Paradise has a lot of people that are missing. So when they did the districts for Butte County, the supervisory district that included Paradise was actually undercounted, but they had a really good reason for that because they had thousands of people who just fled. And so they had a justification to have their number be lower than some of the others, but you should have to have a good reason as opposed to just deciding to make one lower than the other. Because then that violates the whole idea of population equality and one person, one vote. One real quick thing in terms of when we look at population, we're talking about every living heartbeat, right? So every citizen, non-citizen, child, elder, anyone, homeless population, they were counted under the census. It's every person that was counted on the census. And that's important because when we talk about the Voting Rights Act, we don't necessarily talk about every living heartbeat. We talk about citizens, voting age, population to determine that under federal law. But, and then obviously, not every person who's counted is a registered voter. Not everyone does vote. And so we have different criteria that we look at, not only for counting equal population, but dealing with the Voting Rights Act and then dealing with the election that follows that. So under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and I don't need to spend a lot of time on this because it's not a huge issue in your area, but just to give you an idea, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, what the Congress was attempting to do is particularly in the South, there were areas of the southern portion of the United States where they would draw districts to prevent African Americans from being represented, being not only having an elected representative in Congress, but the state legislature, but also that it, they would take, they would prevent the African American community from being able to choose the candidate of their choice. And so for example, say there was a nice, compact population in our previous example of 20,000 people that was largely African American. They would take those 20,000 people and they'd put 4,000 in each of the five districts so that they would never be able to elect an African American to Congress or legislature or whatever. And then, so then the other issues, that's called cracking. When you crack an ethnic population, there's also packing. Say there were 40,000 people that were, that were African Americans in an area or, and this applies to any ethnicity or race. There were 40,000. Well, then they put 20,000 all in one district. That's packing. And then they crack the other 20 into four different districts. That's cracking. And both of them are illegal under federal law. But it needs to be a balanced approach to the way that we deal with pockets, pockets of racial and ethnic minorities. But the issue for you, you have for Rancho Cordova and the Park District and all of your area, the Sacramento County is you don't have large populations of ethnicities that are large enough to control a district in the five. Maybe a significantly high number, but it's not enough to control at this point from what we can tell. But as we go through this process together, we'll actually look at the map, we'll show you, and we can make some decisions on how you all might like to proceed. I pretty much covered this. One other issue just really quickly is, and this is a lot, a very important issue in other parts of the country and other parts of California, but you can't draw a district just for, with the only purpose being race either. So you can't throw all of a certain ethnic minority or racial minority into a particular area. And that would be because if the only criteria would be race, that has been ruled unconstitutional. And Shaw versus Reno. So back to communities of interest really quickly. Most of the people, if we get any public comment during this process, they're going to be talking about communities of interest and they're going to say, hey, I want to be with, I want to be in the same district as Pat. He's my neighbor. I like him. I want to be, I want to be in the same area as him. Or we all live next to a particular school. And once again, people are going to come forward, make all kinds of comments. And we need to, as you go through this process, listen to them, hear them out and take their, take their concerns into consideration, but communities of interest can be in conflict. If you, school district boundaries may be different from the way parks are organized in your community or the way streets are divided. And then you also obviously have that population equality issue to deal with as well, where you have to draw lines. So it's just something to weigh as you go through the process. And it's all things to all people. Just a few more slides here on compactness. It's, it's a pretty simple issue. I don't think it's going to be that big of a concern for you all. Very few, in California anyway, very few issues of compactness come up. You don't end up with huge strings that wrap all the way around the district or, you know, long elongated areas where you pass up one population to include another. On contiguity, contiguity means that the districts have to touch or that they're one solid area. In California law, we don't allow point contiguity anymore, where you just have one single point connect two parts of a district. But there's also a functional contiguity. And the example that I have here on the slide is these, these districts may be And the example that I have here on the slide is, is this, these districts may be connected by a point right here and they make sense, but you have a mountain range that separates these people. These would be contiguous, but they're really not functional. These people over here interact with these people on the same side of the mountain range far more than they do with these people all the way over here. So you want to keep people functionally together because they go down the same highways or whatever else. You, you're not going to have a lot of those issues. And some of the water districts I'm working with in Southern California, they have contiguity issues because they have basically pockets of land dozens of miles away from the main portion, an island basically that's part of their district that is not connected. You really don't have those issues in your parks district. Let's skip over this, one other thing. For online mapping, 20 years ago, when I did redistricting in the legislature, I was the only one with a really cool computer that could do all this stuff. That's not the case anymore. If you hear about the democratization of finance where people can trade stocks on their phones. 10 years ago, when I did the redistricting for the city of Oak Grove, there was a gentleman who sat in the front row nearly every day of every one of our presentations. He may be there every day, I don't know, but just that he was there at every presentation. And he drew a map on a placemat. And he figured out what the numbers were, he drew it on a placemat, we put it into the computer. And that's the map they're currently using in the city of Oak Grove right now. And it's about to change as they go through their process. But a lot more people can be involved in redistricting. And these are some of the tools that people will use. And as we go through this process, there may be times where I need to help people draw maps so that they can participate in the process, feel that they're heard and be able to participate. Talked about communities of interest already. Just some of the different factors that you weigh, you're looking for their relationship to policies. And some of this stuff I'm going to be able to help you with in terms of demographics. And this is some of the basic information that we have from the census. And oftentimes the question comes up, well, Matt, we don't like the census. So there's an under counter, an over counter, or whatever it might be. The census numbers are the census numbers. And whatever anyone's thoughts are about under count, over count, it's the really only, the, the real only database that we can use. And the, I'll just tell you right now, your numbers, if you were to look up your exact boundaries, maybe a little bit different than mine. But the reason mine are, are going to be a little bit different is because under state law, anyone who was incarcerated and you don't, I don't think you have a federal prison or state prison in your district that I'm aware of anyway. And but in those cases, what we needed to do was working with the California Department of Corrections in the statewide database, anyone of, any resident of your community here in the shaded area who was incarcerated and they knew was from the district, they were reallocated back to those areas. So our numbers either went up or down. In some areas like in, in Lassen County where Susanville is, their population went down because all those prisoners were allocated back to where they were originally arrested from. And so that's why the numbers are a little bit different. We have a count right now of 127,852 heartbeats. And the numbers that we have down below here is that you have in terms of CVA for 2019, which is the latest numbers that are out from the Census Bureau of the citizens voting age population, so citizens who are 18 years or older. We have, you have a district that's 55.6% white, 10.2% African American, 12.3% Asian and 16% Latino Hispanic. And so those, none of those numbers for racially protected minorities, which would be African American, Asian, Latino, Hispanic, are likely to rise to the case where that you have specific neighborhoods where they would all be together to raise significant Voting Rights Act issues. We're going to have to look at those, but it's not a huge concern right now. But we'll continue to, as we go through this process, to consider those things. I just have two more slides and then I'm happy to take any questions. This is just simply using the American Community Survey numbers, simply graphing out the changes. Actually, my slides a little bit cut off here, I don't know if you all can see this, but between over the last 10 years, how it's changed in terms of the total population and the, of the citizens voting age population. You can see your Latino communities grown fairly substantially relative to the white population. And that's not any different than what's happened in California largely overall. And then finally, I have a slide here that Danielle shared with us with the different next steps for our hearing dates. And the next date, I believe, is next Monday, when we'll largely go through this presentation again and see if the public has any thoughts and input for us as we proceed together. So that's what I have, Madam Chairwoman. And so I don't know how you'd like to proceed at this time, but if the board has any questions, happy to take them. Or if members of the public have comments, happy to take those two and write them down to consider for future draft maps.
Okay, well, since this is a public hearing, now is the time to invite any members of the public to speak if they wish. Clerk Jones, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
Your line back, we have checked with our customer service line as well as our email and the chat, and I see no request for public comment.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to close the hearing at 7:30 PM. And now it's time for questions from the board. So we will start with Director Sloan, do you have any questions on this item?
I have lots of questions and I hope, thanks, Matt, for the presentation. I thought it was very interesting. It seems that, no, you mentioned that when I first saw that idea about mountains, mountain range dividing, I think about the freeway that's dividing our district. And I think if that was an idea, if you guys went by that, that might, that might be very interesting, but what happens if with me, I don't have to run again till 20, 20, 2024? Yet we're going to have an election in 2022 and if we go by this new districting, if my area is, I don't have to run, so I don't, my area would not be part of it? Or would somebody else just jump into the bandwagon and I would, I would be gone? That's one of my questions. Or if, if two directors live in the same area, but one's running now and the other one doesn't have to run for two more years, are they automatically just phased out of being a director the next two years? Because that person's already got, is good for four years. And then I think the other one is what happens in the future when we build more homes out in Rio de la Ora, the new county area, the new population grows? And now we've got to take those numbers, we'll redistrict again, we'll re proportion and that will affect everything. So did you understand those questions?
I think I got them all, they're pretty common questions. And so if with the chairwoman's consent, I'll just try to answer those if that's okay. So I'll start with your last question first, which is, redistricting is done once a decade with new census data to be able to do that. And so you will redistrict again in, in 20, well, actually, you'll probably do it in 2031. But we're a little bit delayed because of the census data and the problems with the pandemic. So you will do it again, there will be population adjustments over the decade and then it'll be reset 10 years from now. So your population deviations may change by then, but you simply go by the census data by the, that was given to us here for their count in April of, April 1st of 2020. And so, and they'll adjust again. So your other questions about the elections are very common. I just dealt with this question for San Diego City last night at length. But the issue is that none of the board members, redistricting cannot change the outcome of any of those elections that have happened previously. So some of you, and I don't know which ones right now, were elected in 2018. And so your terms are going to end at the end of 2022 and you're going to be up for election. For those of you who are elected in 2020, you are a duly elected member. You're going to stay an at-large elected member until 2024. There's nothing that redistricting can do for that. You are sworn in, you're good to go. In fact, not to bring up a horrible topic, but if you were to, example, to be recalled for some reason, it would not be under the district lines, it would be under where you were elected, which is at large. So if there was a recall election, you would actually be recalled with the electorate that voted you into office years ago, even though after we have moved to district boundaries in future elections, that would, that would change. But that's the justification for that. So your question then is how we end up doing these lines? So if you, you were elected Windsor in 2022 or 2020 or 2018?
2020.
So 2020, so there, you, you all are going to end up through this process drawing five districts. And so if your district is, is, is the where you live, happen. And by the way, my recommendation to every one of my clients is draw the five districts and then number them to figure out who's going to run when at the final end of the process to be able to figure that out. And that's usually the final step after you get good districts, then you number them and figure out which ones go in which elections. But if you, if three members of your board went out there and drew a district so that the district that you live in is up in 2022, you would have a choice. Your choice would be to run in the new district that includes your home in 2022. And if you were to win, you would then have to abandon your at-large seat that you won in 2020. That seat would then be open for either, however your bylaws work, either a special election or appointment to represent the rest of your term that you abandoned to take your seat in 2022. If, if you drew lines and approved lines in some way where two members happen to be in the same district and you can choose to try to avoid that or figure that out or however you want to do that. If you put two members in the same district and a majority of the board does that, then those two members would have the possibility of running against each other in the election when that's called.
Well, for instance, Terry Lineback and myself, Chair, Chair Lineback, we live in a general area of what's dividing us is a freeway. And that's where she's running in 2022 and I don't have to run till 2024. But if she's running, if we draw lines where I'm now going against Terry, I would have to run in November if I want to beat Terry. And I wouldn't want to do that.
Then, then your remedy is to encourage your board members to not adopt a map that does that.
Oh, so I always wondered how much control the board members have in, in adopting these, these different districts.
You have complete control.
Complete control. I got you. So like we could say Rosemont and Magar, and we can say where I live, College Greens and, and Breka and part of, you know, Rancho on that side of the freeway would be my district.
So sir, eventually, when we get to this point after our next meeting on Monday or, or tonight or whatever, traditionally, my clients and your board can handle it any way you want to. They send me away and they say, hey, come up with some draft maps, right? Give us some ideas of things to think about. And almost always, we'll come back with five recommendations or after staff looks at them, maybe seven or eight, like we just did in the water district last week. And you'll look at a couple of the maps and you'll say, those are horrible, we hate them. Don't ever bring those back to us and that'll be okay. But there'll be a couple you'll look at and you go, hey, this makes sense. And we would show school district boundaries or attendance boundaries or whatever it was to be able to come with the maps. And you can make whatever adjustments you want. And in an open meeting, then you can try, and then it's up to finding a, a map or set of maps that a majority or the entire board likes. But yes, you have, you can, and, and my job would be, if you do, based on population equality, for example, if you do a district with 100 people in it, sir, right around your house, he goes, well, I just want to represent my cul-de-sac. I'd have an obligation to tell the board, hey, that violates the population equality numbers. You can't, you shouldn't do that. In the end, you can do whatever you want, but I would be obligated to say, hey, that's a bad idea. You're violating a principle of redistricting. And you're, I would assume your legal counsel would tell you the same thing, but your board would have the freedom to be able to do that.
I'm going to let some of my other board members chime in. I just, I just want to, I, I just don't want to lose the idea that I'm now only going to be focusing in on my little group, my 20,000. I want to, I want to make sure that I'm still district-wide focused. Because I think it's important for a board to be, to be effective in what they do is taking into consideration the entire district and not just 20,000 people in their, in their area.
So that's, and that's a governance issue. That's how the individual board members choose to serve. And I've, I've served with people who are very focused on their district, they don't care about the rest. I've served with people who are, have a much broader view of the city or county and they feel obligated to look at it that all, but that's who gets elected and that's the process.
Thank you.
Hey, Director Danzel.
Looking at the information that's there, it's, you know, like it's, like it states in the agenda, it is a potential transition, which is something I like to see that it's potential, it doesn't have to happen. But the only request I, I have, and I talked to the general manager earlier today and he kind of remarks that I'm the historian of the group. And I would, when these numbers get set out and everything, the only thing I ask is that the original part of the district, however that gets cut out, but where Fetter's Field and Hagan Park sit now is District One, just because that is where the district started. I really don't have any other things right now. You know, that's just the way I look at it, that's where it started. That is, that is the number one position where we started, so I'd like to keep it that way. I know there's going to be questions to come as we go along through this process. So I will get to those when we get to those.
Hey, Secretary Yearwood.
All right, sorry, it took a second to get the mute off. I like that, that's interesting about the historic District One, I never thought about that. I kind of like that, Director Danzel. The only question I have for you is, we do have a, the, the more established part of the neighborhoods where there, there's no possibility of development. And we have the area out in Sunrise Douglas where there's going to be population explosion, of course, as part of the county. When you put the, when these maps were originally drawn up, do you maybe leave the population less, maybe in some areas it's going to develop more, you know? And then over time, that way it's not such a, I know, maybe over the 10 years, it kind of evens out a little bit more? Or is that even kind of a thought, a thought of when you're doing that?
Well, you can, and I gave you the example of Paradise in terms of those numbers, but they're really sure that people are coming back. And I, I just, it's difficult sometimes to speculate, you know, when development's going to happen, how many people are going to move and whatever else, you have to factor that in overall. But if you truly anticipated a lot of development, that could be a reason to slightly undercount, but you couldn't do it in such a way that, you know, one district is, is under by 15 or 20%. And you're, hey, Matt, you know, I know 10,000 people are going to move there. Well, that's, that's too far, that legally wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking, yeah, staying within the numbers and all that. Would you consider not, one, being a little less to factor some of that in? Because you never know what's going to happen with housing, you know? Level first tomorrow. I mean, that was pretty much all I had, it was very, I appreciate all the information. I'm sure it'll, as time goes by, get a little more finer details and things like that, so. Thank you.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Thank you. My first question is this whole thing on redistricting and, and this whole process, you know, I don't really understand the timing, okay? So are we, do we have a deadline which we are trying to catch? Or, or, you know, it's, it's within a certain period of time?
Well, every, every, lots of special districts with November elections are going through this process right now. I'm working with hospital districts and park districts and water districts. So the process you're going through right now is being shared with special districts all over the state of California. And so, and your Sacramento County Elections Office would like this data. I believe it's by April 15th or something like that. So that's one of the reasons we're going through this time period is to try to, to wrap it up so that they can do precinct boundaries and everything else that they need to do to administer an election, whether you do it at large or at districts, but you're going through that process. But, you know, your legal counsel can advise you on California Voting Rights Act implications or whatever else. But, you know, the other part of it is that if you don't go to district elections, you do have some potential legal liability.
Okay, and, and, but there is a, you, you have to do it within a certain period of time?
Yes, well, you, the idea would be that you would want to do it before this next election.
Okay, and there's penalty if you don't do it before this next election?
Well, if you don't get it done here relatively soon, the county won't be able to administer the election. And under the California Voting Rights Act, which I mentioned, if any attorney sends a demand letter, you would be, potentially be forced to pay their attorney's fees if they attempted to litigate the matter. And there have been several entities that have attempted to fight that. And I'm not aware of any that have won yet, they've continued to lose legal challenges.
Okay, okay, well, that's because I, I know some, I've had people talking to me and saying, why, what's, what's the, what is? What is the, is there a penalty? Is there a, you know, a judgment? Is she, does it have to be done now? And so I just wanted to understand that timing and that that timeframe. Uh, because I said, I don't know, is there a penalty? When are we behind the eight ball? I mean, was there, you must all change it. And redistrict by November of twenty twenty two.
I thought there was some rule about as long as you're in the process of.
If you actually can Danielle or Pat, can you, have you, have you passed the resolution of intent to go to district elections?
We passed a resolution of intention to transition, but not the official. Just a resolution of intention to start the process.
So the answer to the question is you all right now are in a safe harbor period. Where you're given the opportunity to be able to go through this process and come up with district elections and go through this process. If you eventually decide not to, um, the day after you decide not to, an attorney can walk in with a demand letter with a client who says. I believe there's racially polarized voting and and within your district boundaries. And I's, I I'm gonna force you to go to district elections. You will then have to pay their attorney's fees. Um, to be able to do that. It's capped, you can go. And actually, I'm not even sure at that point, because you had gone into the safe harbor provision, which you're in right now. I'm not sure they'd allow you to go back in. I don't know enough about the law on that. I'd leave that up to your legal counsel to decide that.
And then the other question.
Sloan, I I would like you to wait until all of us had a chance to speak and then we can go around again if we can.
Uh, I just wanted to know that, that's good clarification, cause I was talking about us going through this process and I. Uh, and I had some people uh, tell me, why do you have to do it? What's your timeframe? Is there a penalty and all that? And I said, yeah, I think there is. So the other thing I wanted to say is I'm looking forward to seeing. My understanding uh, is that you come up with several maps. Right? To be able to show us the way we could redistrict or divide our district. In a way that there was equality, continuity and all that jazz. So um. It is, I I mean, I'm going to hold myself off till then. Because then that would be a good opportunity to be able to understand. You know, whether what's acceptable, what's not, you know what I mean? And and why and how?
You know, Christie, their director, there are, um, there's a hundred different ways to do this, right? That are all legal, that comply with the law, and we're gonna end up finding one together that makes the majority of the board happy. And and um, you know, that's the process that we're gonna go through, but. The population equality numbers are such that we could do this with the different census blocks. A hundred or a thousand different ways, and we need to find one that meets the meets the objectives of the board.
Wonderful, and then we'll be working together as a board with yourself too, and obviously we take public input. Thank you, that's all. Cheers, Lineback. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have um. A few questions. Um. I want to start with public input. So the identification of the communities of interest are occurring. Um, tonight and Monday night, is that correct?
Um, I I think it's Monday morning. But but if members of the public or people on this Zoom call right now, um, and I I wrote down what um. Director Danzel said about Fetters and Hagan being in D one, right? So it implies to me that there's a community of interest there, and I think his justification was that it's a historical. View of the park district, so we would try to at least come up with one map that does that now. That would just be one of the five districts that did that. He may hate the rest of it. We did just it accordingly, but. We would work to try to incorporate that into some of them and, you know, once again. My job is to give you all options and you're gonna look at some of them and you're gonna, oh, those are horrible. And then you look at one, say, okay, well, we can work with this one. Let's try to figure out. How we make amend amendments to that to make it fit what we want to do.
Well. Uh, my actual question was uh, the opportunity for the public to, I, the public, I mean, the the. Directors are gonna be throughout this entire process, right? And we have the ultimate decision, but. But this meeting tonight, um, at which there is no public and then the next. Um, public hearing is gonna be Monday morning. Those will be the two opportunities that the public will have. To chime in about what they think the communities of interest ought to be. Is that correct?
Well, they will be able to comment all throughout the process, but I'll just tell you, having done this and dozens of entities around the country now. Um, people aren't gonna show up until they see lines on maps. That's, we're gonna go through this process, but eventually when they see lines on maps, well.
Okay.
But I, I don't know why I'm telling you this, you know, as soon as you start talking about doing something with a piece of land, that's when the neighbors come. You can talk about it all day. But you know, dirt starts turning and then people start showing up. That's the way it works.
All right, that's fair enough. Um. You you mentioned that um. Well, you said something about the potential legal liability. And while I would like to comment that I believe there was a court ruling that said that. Uh, by district elections could not be compelled. If there was no proven racially polarized issues in a given. Agency, city, school district, park district, you name whatever the entity is, it's districting. So the the challenge has to be to racially polarized. Problems that need to be addressed by districting, is that correct?
Uh, well, you're, that's a hundred percent right, and and your, um, the the process that you're going through or laying out is exactly the way it would work. If somebody did ran the analysis and they said, no, we think that you have racially polarized voting. And we sent a demand letter, we want you to go to district elections. Then you would have to then do a racially polarized voting analysis. You would have to basically um. Um, go through that process and I, as I mentioned previously, I've looked at um. I would guess I had looked at twenty racially polarized voting analysis for analyses from all over the state. And every single one of them showed racially polarized voting and and all over the state of California and and areas where people say, oh, not us. Um, but in fact, um, there usually is and um. Uh, and and people don't like hearing it, but that's just the the society that we live in to some extent. So the burden, the burden is very small under the California Voting Rights Act.
Okay, and um, you had said earlier on in your presentation that the uh. Initial analysis of the park district is that there's no particularly racially. Concentrated areas. Was, did I misunderstand that?
No, and that's under the federal Voting Rights Act, but yes, you're right, I didn't say that.
Okay, um, and so if we don't really have any areas. That um, are particularly racially defined. Would we primarily be looking at? The equity of population within each district.
Um, yes, and so I I do want to clarify, so there's two different Voting Rights Act um. Legal standards that we're dealing with here. We have the California Voting Rights Act, which really only forces district elections. And the district elections can be, uh, there's no, uh, um. Other than following the federal Voting Rights Act, there's no requirements on how those districts are drawn. We have the Federal Voting Rights Act, and when I was talking about the, your district not having large pockets of. Of ethnic and racial minorities, that's in terms of where people live. You don't have a particular neighborhood that's. Has twenty percent or twenty-five percent of your district's population is all Latino and they all live in one particular neighborhood. You don't, you don't have that in in your area. So my my point was is that I would have a difficult time. Helping you all draw a district where one district could have fifty percent Latinos see that. Under the example I just gave, because you can't connect them all together. It doesn't work. And so those are different standards, and so I don't want to make, I just want to make sure those are clear, but. Your oh, your final conclusion and statement was absolutely correct, which is you're overriding consideration for your district as I see it right now is. Population equality and then lining up communities of interest. And once again, that communities of interest can be anything. You all could decide on what those are and weigh those out, but it's largely putting neighborhoods together into the different districts.
Okay, um, I think those are my questions for tonight at least. Um, Director Sloan, I know you wanted to say some more.
I mean, I could, I could wait till Monday, but I just wanted to. I just wanted, what I heard is that. We do not have to rush into this thing and have something decided by the, by April of this year. Right? That we don't have to worry about someone gonna sue us because we've got the process happening, right? Is that what I heard?
You do have to act um, by this next election. You have to give the maps to the county by April. Um, Danielle, you have a different date?
It's. No, I agree with you. Um, we have to have our boundaries finalized by July sixth. But they do, they do want the maps by April.
So if you don't do that, in my opinion, and I'm not your attorney, I am an attorney, but I'm not your attorney. Um, you would subject yourself to liability under the California Voting Rights Act for somebody to come in and issue a letter saying. I am going to choose a show racially polarized voting and force you to do that. And if you didn't take this step, what I don't know is. Would the court allow you go into the safe harbor provision and prevent somebody from actually going to court? Cause what they do is they submit a demand letter saying I'm going to sue, and then you get a chance to correct it. You would have had your chance to correct it and you would have passed on it. I'm not sure the court's gonna allow you that safe harbor.
So we can just, so. Say, say, we have no public tonight. Say Monday, we don't have any public. It's basically gonna be up to the Board of Directors and the district to come up with a, a plan here.
Yes, and and the reality is, is that you may not have public comment until the very last night. After, on our third meeting, we're gonna do some draft maps, and that's when people are most likely to turn out. And I just did the entire county of San Bernardino, and in all of our meetings, we did about probably twenty-five different public meetings. We had about thirty people in total attend them. Uh, you don't end up with a lot of comments in redistricting. That's just the nature of the game.
So I I I think I'm hearing a question that's kind of keep on being asked, but the answer to. The public's ability to give comment or suggestions or maps even. Uh, is extended through all five public hearings that are scheduled, not just this one and Monday. It's all of them and in addition, outside of that, there's an ability for them. To go on our website, to contact Matt, to suggest outside of those traditional. Already crafted scheduled public hearing notices. So it's it's a, it's a window of a couple, what, a month, two months worth of public hearings. Where the formal uh, invitation to the public to be participating is is announced. But in addition to that, they don't have to just stay to that. They can also. Through our website and through the tools we'll provide, give feedback or suggestions and participate in this process. So I just want to make sure that you're clear, it's not just tonight, just Mondays are only opportunity for the public to. Give us their opinion. It's the entirety of the time. Uh, starting from now until we actually figure out what we're going to do uh, with this body of work. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope there's some type of an app. That we can have that when we start drawing lines, it'll tell you what the population is in those lines.
I I'm gonna do all that for you and you'll be able to see all of that.
Does any other director have any other comments they'd like to make before we close this? Yes.
This one, one real quick question, uh, Clerk Jones, when did we have to have those maps to them? When in April?
The deadline is, the official deadline is July sixth to have our maps and boundaries completed. In order to do the uh, November twenty twenty-two election. But as Mr. Rexroad mentioned, they want them earlier in April so that they can start. Um, dealing with their precinct issues.
Okay, so there's no specific date in April, just probably before the end of April, I would assume.
So Sacramento County is being really good to you, and some areas I'm working in, they want them by April one or March fifteenth. And so um, if Sacramento County is willing to wait that long, that is unique in the state, and so most everyone's trying to finish by tax day.
Okay, I always ask, cause you said, you said, I thought I heard April fifteenth and there's somewhere, but I noticed on this timeline. That April twentieth would be, we would potentially finalize these.
Uh, that's. Sacramento County.
So out of curiosity, do you know what other agencies in Sacramento County are pursuing this right now? Specifically.
Um, in Sacramento County, I can tell you that Elk Grove is going through the redistricting process. They used to have. Um, where people lived in districts, but they ran citywide. They're changing that. They're going through that process and have. Um, Sacramento County's finished, Sacramento City's done, Folsom, I believe, is just going to districts now. Um, my city of Woodland, where I live, both the school district and the city are going through their process. Uh, the Community College District, the County Board of Education has already done it for Sacramento, completed their lines. Um, I'm working with ten different special districts, maybe fifteen different ones throughout the state, but. This is redistricting season. That's what you're in the middle of it right now.
Okay, thank you. So are we, is everybody satisfied that they were able to make the comments they wanted to make?
Uh, Director or Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, my question is, um. Mister uh, Rexroad said that, you know, there's thousands of possibilities. He said typically. Agencies ask for five to, five to seven maps. I want to go to our general ma- manager and ask him what his plan is. If we're looking at thousands of possibilities, are we looking at one percent? Are we looking at less than one percent on our maps turnaround?
My recommendation is we follow the consultant's recommendations as to why we're. Scoping the work in that direction. It's not for me to decide what the process is. It's the process to which. You know, our consultant, Mr. Exford, is going to lead us through. I don't have a preference. Um, and so I'm just, you know, we're leaning on the expertise of our consultant to give us that opinion. Uh, i- it's a process, and so I don't have any already crafted idea of what I really want and how I'm going to direct them. I'm leaving that up to. Uh, the body of work that he's gonna lead us through.
Director, just an answer that, I'm gonna try to get you of several options that are vastly different from each other, right? And so then, when they come back, you have a starting point to say, hey. You know, when, when you come back to me next time, move this line up to that street, or we want to include this park in District One or Three or whatever. You know, it needs to be with the Western District. So, you know, my hope is, is that, you know, I give you some starting point. Would you say, okay, well, this is, he's at least in the ballpark here. Let's adjust this one, and then we can go to work on that. Maybe you do that with two maps, and then eventually we get to one and and. You'll have a vote and pick one, or maybe you, in some cases, oftentimes, there's kind of a. Clear consensus, uh, you know, builds around one of the different um, visualizations I give you, and then everyone just tinkers with it, and then we've got our final product.
Okay.
That actually gave rise to a question for me. Will each of these uh, iterations or or possible variations contain demographic information? For us to, okay.
Yes, you would know, um, similar information that I have on your slide right now for your entire district. Usually when I'm doing redistricting and not districting like I'm doing for you. I tell each of the directors what the demographic informations are of their current districts, but you don't have that, so I, that's why I had to go district wide. And usually, you would know the population and the different um, uh, racial and ethnic information that I mentioned previously uh, with that. But we don't include um, voting data and we will not. I will not look at any of that at any process. Um, I'm just not going to. It's not, it doesn't belong in this process.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Um, okay, I'm done, is satisfied, rather, I should say. Um, that I've had my questions asked, yes. Um, Vice Chair.
Uh, Chair Lineback and fellow board members, if I understand Rick's, uh, the Director Sloan's comment earlier. Because here we go through all the trainings and our trainings all uh. Tell us that one of the best things is, you know, you're not running for one specific agenda. Or one specific interest. Uh, you're supposed to be. Taking into consideration the interests of the the entire district. And so in that respect, it's interesting because like uh, Director Sloan had mentioned, uh, it. Turns it around now, you know what I mean? And now we have to come with community interest, which may be agendized. I mean, it's an agenda we've gotta get going, but I guess that's the way they feel it, the community's best served. That was my only comment, you know, cause I used to remember, we would say, hey, you know, you didn't run just because you wanted a pool. You know what I mean? You've gotta run because you want to uh, something that benefits. You know what I mean? You've got to run because you want to, uh, something that benefits the entire district.
All right, I, I'll, I'll interject there if you don't mind. I, I think it, like he had said, it is about governance. And so once this is established, we'll have a good understanding and mindset as, uh, how we look at this. Uh, so that we're not all on different pages in terms of now we're looking at it district wide, not just by the district you're elected to.
Yeah.
And so I would obviously prefer that all electeds look at us district wide holistically. They just happen to be representing at, you know, certain constituents in that particular area, but not exclusively.
Yeah, I know. I, I understand. And that's one of the things, the temptation though is there. Because what happens is, like anything else, you will always, and maybe that's the reason why they want redistricting is you will always say, okay, well, these are the people I serve. And these are the people that I answer to. And so these are the people I have to fight for what they want. You know what I mean? Now, that's just plain and simple. Uh, I really don't care. This is my, but we have the altruistic other part of us that say, hey, wait a minute. You know, we want it also to benefit, you know, the other communities. But it's very interesting because I know some communities have been receiving a lot uh, because they're older or whatever of attention, time, money, renovation, et cetera. And I know other communities have not really been receiving much, even if there's some money for them. So anyway, that's all, that's my only comment. And I'm looking forward to seeing the maps uh, and seeing how the districts go. And maybe it might be good because to some extent, um, I think it will allow us to encourage the districts we serve to pull out their interest and say, hey, what's happening? What are you doing from my side too? You know, well, right now we're just like, oh, park or all this thing. So anyway, that's interesting.
That's my comment. I think that's what Director Reyes says is very important. I think us as a board, we work strong together. I think, so that's why it's important for us to, to build something and to come up with the policy of governance. Because I do not want someone, if I'm out and about at an event and someone who lives in Anatolia comes up and says they got a problem, I'm not, I don't want to be saying, that's not my area. I'm not dealing with that. Talk to Director Yearwood, you know, he lives out there. You know, leave me alone. I don't want that kind of stuff. It doesn't make sense to me. It's not what I was taught in all the, uh, governance and courses I've taken, um, from the, you know, Special District Association and all sorts of stuff, so. Um, all right, I, we'll see what goes on on Monday. I guess, is it more of the same thing? Just a different phase of the thing? Or is it the same thing we're having? This next, this next
It's our second public hearing. It sounds like it's similar to tonight. It's another opportunity, but we're not going to have the maps available on Monday, correct?
No, no maps on Monday, but does that mean there's no song on Monday?
Well, we can always add one if you'd like to sing for us now.
I, yeah, I thought the executive director always had to sing a song at the second meeting. That's part of redistricting law that I didn't brief you all on earlier.
I could, I can do that. That's okay. I don't know if you want to, but I can make that happen.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, I'd like to shut this discussion down at this point because we've, um, had a lot and we will have another opportunity on Monday morning. So, um, you know, you'll have a chance to go back and put your thinking caps on after we've had this presentation and heard other, uh, questions and maybe come back, um, with some more on Monday morning of our questions and, and ideas and, um, you know, so on. If, if that's acceptable to, uh, my fellow board members. Okay, thank you very much. Well, um, thank you, Mr. Rexroad. I, we appreciate your great information and your patience in dealing with us. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you, uh, on Monday morning.
Be safe. Have a good day, everyone.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on now to our regular calendar item G1.
Thank you, Chair Linebacke. Item G1 is to approve the release of a request for qualifications, request for proposals for professional consulting services to prepare a comprehensive parks, facilities and recreation optimized plan for the Cordoba Recreation and Park District. And I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Laura Taylor.
Good evening, Chair Linebacke and members of the board. Um, I'm excited to bring this, um, RFQ, RFP to you tonight. Um, the Board of Directors approved, uh, some previous master planning documents back in 2013 and 2014. And those documents utilize data that was gathered around 2010. And those documents have been instrumental in guiding, uh, CRPD's response to the phenomenal development and growth within its boundaries that it's occurred since the 2009 recession. The 10-year U.S. Census is obviously an important milestone for government. And now is the appropriate time for the Cordoba Record Park District to prepare a new comprehensive plan to provide guidance to CRPD decision makers for the next decade. The completion of the 2020 United States Census provides fresh updated demographic data for CRPD and the timely opportunity to apply new data as part of the planning process. CRPD has chosen the title optimized plan instead of the more traditional master plan for multiple reasons, which we have discussed. A management team and the board discussed in an earlier, uh, retreat meeting that we had. And so I'm not going to repeat those, but they are in your staff report. Um, recurring updated comprehensive planning efforts are recommended and it is good public policy. In some cases, updated comprehensive planning information is required to comply with state laws such as the need to routinely update the background data for mandated nexus study updates. CRPD staff intends to routinely request the Board of Directors renew the optimized planning process consistent with the availability of the 10-year U.S. Census data going forward. And as needed, portions of the plan will be updated during that 10-year horizon. The process for hiring for a consulting firm will be consistent with the planning department's policy of 1.23 consultant selection. And the RFQ, RFP is attached to the staff report in your agenda packet. It was a management team effort and I really appreciate all the management team's input and especially Jill Mann's, um, contribution. We had several meetings talking over and hashing over the details of, um, specifically what we wanted the consultant and the, uh, op- night plan to deliver to us at the end of this process. So once the board approves the RFQ, RFP, staff will advertise and notify qualified firms. Staff anticipates recommending an agreement for the Board of Directors approval in April or May of 2022, depending on the duration it takes to negotiate a final consultant agreement. We anticipate approximately 18 months to complete the entire process. And with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, you know, as I said, that, that document is in your packet. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
So I guess, um, we should at least, um, officially ask for if there's any public comment on this item.
I do not have any requests.
Okay, um, so, uh, the Board of Directors, uh, Director Sloan. Do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, I'd rather, um, hear some of the comments from my other fellow directors before I chime in. I, otherwise I might not have anything. It's one of the, here what they have to say.
Uh, Director Dancel?
None.
Um, Secretary Yearwood?
I don't have any.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Uh, no real questions, just, um, uh, uh, a realization that yes, I think we need, it's time for us to go ahead and, and, uh, find, uh, you know, our optimized plan so we can readjust and work towards it. And I think probably in the process of doing this, would we not, um, and be able to then have the, the, the ability to come up with an MSR? Uh, Chair Linebacke, in our meeting, uh, with the Special District Advisory of FLAFCO, uh, they had spoken something about that. And I do remember that the first time we did, um, get the FLAFCO MSR was after we had like, uh, uh, the master plan, uh, process. So, uh, maybe what would happen here is not only would we get this comprehend optimized, uh, plan, uh, but we'd also be able to then, uh, get a report, uh, you know, worked on, uh, for the MSR that, uh, FLAFCO requires us to have. Am I right?
Well, to address that a little bit, um, I believe the MSR is required, um, every 10 years and that it's, or is it every five? But it's done at the staff level. And I think what we were talking about in FLAFCO was having that MSR presented to the board, which apparently it often isn't. And it, you know, across many, many districts often isn't shared with the board. But it was a recommendation of, um, the, um, FLAFCO directors that that MSR be shared with the Board of Directors. So I think that's, um, but certainly I would think something like this would help you prepare.
Yes, that's what I meant. Uh, yes, that, the findings that they have and all this, uh, would be able to help staff fill their report for the MSR. And, and that it's, I, I believe he said it was like every five years. But like anything else, you know, FLAFCO also, uh, moves, you know, up their pace. Um, it is important, they did ask us to have that on agendized so that we, the board, will be able to, to see that. And it should be made, it'll be easy, you know, as you're working on this optimized plan with a consultant. That's all.
So I have a question for that, if you don't mind. So are we expecting to get notice from FLAFCO that they're requiring for us to do the MSR?
Uh, I had to do it once for FLAFCO and they did, send, I think some kind of a template. And you respond to that template with the details about your district. I could be mistaken. It's been, you know, a year or two.
We chatted, me and Danielle after the last meeting, and I don't think that we've done it recently. So I was just curious as to how, what triggers that notification that we need to update it? So it doesn't seem like a consistent.
Yeah, I thought FLAFCO requested them. Frankly, that's how at least it happened at Folk No Camino. Maybe they want you to send it in every five years. And if time goes by and you haven't sent a new one in, they send a request. I'm really not sure.
Okay.
Um, I think you just have to ask them. Yeah.
But yes, it would help with us getting accurate information, um, that's timely. So yes, it would be helpful.
And, and the MSR is supposed to be a snapshot of, you know, of how, what has happened, you know? What are, how our district has grown or so. So, yeah, yeah.
They want to make sure that you're meeting your service obligations to your population. That's basically what it's
Yep, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Um, Vice Chair Yearwood, did you raise your hand? No? Oh, you were just saying hello? Okay. Or Secretary Yearwood, sorry.
I'm trying to figure out what, uh, Director Sloan is doing. Is he, does he have his hand up or?
I believe so, yeah. I didn't see it until just now. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, okay. So, um, a couple of things. First, um, Director Sloan, um, Vice Chair Reyes, have you finished your comments?
Yes, yes, I have, cheers.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I have one comment, which I did discuss with, um, General Manager Larkin, which was when we were discussing these various, um, consulting contracts through the budgeting process, I was under the impression there would be a strong recreation component to the analysis that the consultant would do. Um, so I was kind of hoping to hear from, um, our, uh, oh gosh, what, what are the titles now? Parks and Recreation Manager? Um, about this contract as well.
Yeah, uh, so, um, Jill, do you want to talk a little bit about the inclusion of the Recreation Needs Assessment in this proposal?
I think, if, I don't have it up in front of me, um, but there, there are several parts within the RFP, RFQ that do, um, um, point out and or ask for the consultant to take a look at recreation services, not only from a, a, a program standpoint, but also from a facility standpoint as well. So, you know, Laura and I really, um, you know, it, it's difficult for us to, um, pinpoint exactly, uh, what we would ask from a program standpoint. Because what we're asking within the RFP and RFQ is for them to take a look at our district and give their recommendations, uh, for the needs throughout the district. And part of that will be recreation programs. And so I do think that it is covered in the RFP and RFQ, not only again for, uh, facilities, but also for recreation programs as well.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, so Director Sloan, you wanted to say something else?
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted to. I, I mean, I, I understand the importance of a master plan. I understand the importance of a general plan. Um, I'm not sure what the difference between the both are, but I remember when we came up with a master plan a while back. And we worked with the city and all, everybody and come up with the, the stakeholders and they identify the, the different entities or what we want and need. Then we had, were hit by a recession and everything that we had planned went like, was tanked. We couldn't really look that way. We had to look a whole different way and with different thoughts. So, um, I mean, I'm sure, I mean, we need it, we need a road map, we need some type of, uh, a thing to go, in order to move forward, we need to know where we are. So I just, I just think that this, uh, if we're going to create some type of, uh, uh, I mean, working in, we don't know what the demographics of the population is going to be. And I remember hearing this story years ago about, uh, building a, a, a state-of-the-art, um, uh, Little League facility. But little did they know, the people weren't having little boys, they were having little girls. And what they needed was a state-of-the-art softball facility instead. And they were stuck with this facility out there that they, that was underused. So those are things that we, you know, it's hard to take that into consideration, but these are things that we have to realize do exist. And I think, I hope that we can, you know, I, I, there's a lots of different, uh, ethnic, cultural backgrounds in Rancho and, and our, in the, in the county, in our district. And if we can touch them all and satisfy them all, that would be great. I think that's one of, and, and I think it has to be multi-gendered kind of a thing, not, not just focusing on one, one thing. So I, 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 I look forward to seeing the, the future of this and how it goes and take part in some type of, uh, discussions during it. So, um, good luck. It's a, it's a, it's a big undertaking. I remember what it was. A guy came from, he wasn't even local, he came from back east. And, and it was, it was hard. But, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, Laura and Jill. And now we are moving on to Board of Director items.
Uh, do we, I'd like to make a motion, Chair Linebacke?
Sorry, we're supposed to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the release of a request for qualification, request for proposals for professional consulting services to prepare a comprehensive parks, facilities and recreation optimized plan for the Cordoba Recreation and Park District.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Director Dancel, beat you to it. Um, uh, roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
You need to unmute.
Bye.
Director Dancel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Linebacke?
Aye. Okay, now it's time to move on. Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes for interjecting there. Um, Board Member Reports H1, it shows that there are no trainings, so we will move Board member reports H1. It shows that there are no trainings, so we will move on to item B, Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report. So we can start with Director Sloan, please. Do you want to unmute, Rick?
On, I, on the 11th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting via Zoom. And basically we're on we're on task to complete a lot of the the requests for facility improvements. And a lot of them are dealing with facilities on park property. The Little League field, the soccer fields. And so I know that there's another meeting that is being organized, another Zoom meeting coming up here to help, because they need the, the move forward on these improvement plans, maintenance approval plans. I think they have to be all filed and, and into this, into the city for by June 30th of this, of this year. So I don't know if you, anybody, I think there were some people that will partake in this meeting on, I forget what it is. And I have to look at my record when it was. I have it right in front of me, but I don't see a date. But that, I think that, and I also, I want to talk about the the Board of Supervisors meetings I attended, all three of them. And I was very disappointed, very disappointed that the supervisors were too busy to be there. So we were basically on the ones that I attended. I think Sue Frost did attend in person. But I think we, even though things didn't work out in the way we wanted them, I think we really got our message out, which is important. I mean, two of the supervisors get it. And I think eventually the other three will get it, but there's a lot that goes on here besides what we're, what we're dealing with. And I just think that I thought the staff did an excellent job presenting it. We, we had all our bases covered. And I, I didn't, I, I was very surprised that we just didn't get that one extra vote. But then again, I wasn't surprised because I don't, I don't want to say anything, but it, it's that time of year, you know, you know, you know what I mean? So, but I, I just wanted to just thank staff again for all the hard work that they put into it. And, and there's nothing that I can say, nothing that I, I, I can't see that we would have done anything different. And I don't think we would have changed the minds of the three people, even if we somehow had some. I don't know. I was just, I was just very pleased with our staff. And I think that's all for me.
All right, my mouse wasn't cooperating. Do you have anything, Director Danzel?
I actually do. I have to apologize to Clerk Jones. I did actually have a CARPD board meeting today. So I do, do apologize for that. For me, at that meeting today, day two of our conference in May, they will be having a training. I I had my notes and for some reason it got deleted, but we will be having General Manager Larkin, I told you which one it was. I don't remember.
Anti-sexual harassment.
Yeah, the sexual harassment one. So Clerk Jones, anybody who's got to take that one. It's, you know, obviously a time that we can take it. That's, it's the first time they've added that in a while. Trainings and they're trying to add some of that back in because at the request of the board. So that's, that's good. Other than that, we went over the finances of who got what on COVID relief, those numbers and got to see statewide who got what and asked questions of why they got what and the amount that our district got, talking to our general manager, I believe is the right amount. Obviously, we'd all like to see more money, but we can justify the dollar amount we got, and that's a good thing. Other districts, you know, six and seven million dollars and, and COVID relief, it, it was kind of hard to bite. SAC County, I think, got $23 million or no, $12 million total for SAC County alone. And we did get a portion of that, which was nice to see. Conference is coming along. Obviously, COVID is doing what COVID is doing. So the board is, you know, up there is trying to push that, you know, May, we should be on the bottom of the roller coaster again, as they're saying now. You know, trying to figure out what, what we're going to talk about. They did talk about a keynote speaker today. The gentleman who helped talk about a venture park, anybody who knows what a venture park is, and the lawsuits that happened there over time and why we have some of the rules we have in parks and society, you know, roller coasters and water slides that were never manufactured by anybody, but designed in the backyard and thrown into a, a public park or a entertainment facility and getting hurt and the liabilities because they didn't actually have any insurance. They, they were self, self insured, basically, and they didn't have any insurance. So just why we have some of these rules. So that, that, that person will be our keynote speaker as of, as of today. And just try to grow the membership and move forward.
Thank you. Secretary Yearwood, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sadly, you're not. I was looking forward to reporting on the polar bear plunge, but I escaped for another year.
Yeah, I had promised myself I was going to go, though never, ever jump in the water. So I didn't get to. Okay. Vice Chair Reyes, your report, please.
I attended a meeting with the, the county supervisor, Donna Tully. I totally agree with Director Sloan, our staff. I mean, they did an awesome job, everything to a T. And it, from my point of view, it was a very rewarding meeting. It's, it's because he knows our district. You see what I mean? And and, and again, I think unfortunately, it seems like with the redistricting map of Sacramento County, that county had adopted Supervisor Desmond takes a portion of our, of our, in our district. And I wish we could have had an opportunity to talk to him. Obviously, I heard that it was just staff that had sent, but he's, you know, I know he was, he's kind of new in the, on the board. And I know that much of what he's worked with are like info, but I would have been the first one to say, you know, Supervisor Desmond, you know, you need, you know, you, you really need to understand that you probably will be faced with new development. And, and this would help maintain a good standard of parks for the, the residents you will be serving. Don was, you know, he was really very enlightening when he was talking. And at the same time, you know, it, it's almost like it, it was, it was easy because he was definitely most supportive. We did get to, did get to express to him the fact that, you know, sometimes the, obviously, the BIA had its, had its had its influence. Obviously, I mean, because it's coming on to ask Director Sloan, if you didn't really bring up, but it's election time and there is the pressure and there's the need for support. And there's the need for money and there's the need for power. And unfortunately, it seems like, again, I was more concerned. Look, they're by districts. All right. And it just did not seem like there was an understanding of really what they were giving up and not participating in. But again, as General Manager Larkin, and we all agree, it's their loss. Unfortunately, it's the loss of the residents, the residents that will be left with, you know, the parks. However, if they are parks that we that we have anything to do with building, constructing and all that, they will be as good as our standards will allow us. And I think the developers know this. So the developments and the developers that are, understand that. So that was a rewarding meeting. I know I was on my way to a, to surgery, but I'm like, I had to be part of this and I had to make sure I needed to talk to Don and he was good. And, and he came through for us. Understanding. And so did Sirna, as I hear. The Sacramento Public Hearing, I had it on my, on my calendar, but unfortunately, I had the wrong date. So here I was looking and looking and looking for it. And I'm sitting here and saying, I am watching the Rancho City Council. What is this? It's supposed to be the county. And then I'm like, oh my God. I missed it. It's not Tuesday, it's Wednesday. So anyway, all I needed to know was, you know, the results. And I think we all did the best we could. And it's a win-win for us. We still get to deal with the, the developers one-on-one, as we have always done. And we already have a few of them, already majority of them in line with delivering good parks. When the developers come, they build. Once the building is done, they walk away. How many times have we had it where the neighborhood will say to us, Aaron Lanning, the neighborhood will say to us, it's supposed to be in a community park. It's supposed to be big. Nope, it's too small. It's really a neighborhood park. Oh, it's supposed to be a neighborhood park. Why are we opening it up to the community? You see what I mean? And what was sold to them was a different story. But then again, who's left with, you know, with having to deal with the residents? So anyway, that's, that's my, my two cents worth here. I'm, I'm thrilled and I want to commend Supervisor Notoley for understanding our, our, our goals and our standards and the fact that residents are who we serve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. I, I spent Monday on my computer. That Monday, January 10th, I started off the morning with tax training and then transitioned over to supervisor meetings. So I was extremely tired and had a glass of trune wine at the end of that day. Susan Frost, I thought, you know, she did come herself to the Zoom meeting. She asked good questions. She paid attention. She listened. But ultimately, you know, when it came to voting the next day, she said she was reluctantly voting. No, I appreciated the word reluctantly at least. The other three from that day all sent their chief of staff. I believe only Supervisor Desmond scheduled it with the chief of staff. The other two were just a no-show. Which didn't seem like that would be a good thing, that they didn't want to come and listen to us. So, but nonetheless, you know, the district staff still gave their presentation. We got good questions too from the chiefs of staff. So they clearly understood the issues and understood our perspective. They, they also appeared to understand that while the BIA was asking for those fees to be smaller, nobody said what that would mean. What wouldn't we get if we went with the smaller fee? That question was never answered. And so that was disappointing. I I, I'm sorry to say, I mean, I know this is a public meeting here, but I do think that their concern was with the BIA and the fees that developers were paying. And they didn't really seem to have any genuine concern for the public facilities that would be built with this money for their constituents. And, and that was where I think a lack of foresight came through for me, was that the one-time fee was the focus as opposed to the long-term benefit to the public. But ultimately, the purpose of these, this immense and extremely professional work done by the district was to try and get some consistency in the fees for the developers so that they would know walking in what their fee would be on the side of parks development. And now they are simply going to have to do what they've been doing up to now and negotiate with us one development at a time. It's a time waster for them and it's a time waster for us. But ultimately, I think the district has its nexus plan, which supports the level of service. And that's what they'll be paying for. And I'm not sure that the Board of Supervisors understood that, that by turning down a uniform fee, they were opening it up to a different fee for each development. So more work for everybody, not necessarily wise. So that's my report. I apologize for the negative focus of it, but I was disappointed. And so it's time now to move on to Board Officers' Appointments and Elections. Do you want me to go straight into it, Clerk Jones, or do you want to introduce it?
Just give a brief report quickly on our, our committee appointments for the 2022 term. As you know, in 2020, we did update our policies so that now both the standing and ad hoc committees require a nomination by the chairperson and approval by a majority vote of the board. For 2022, we are recommending the Budget and Finance District Policies, the CIP, and the PMRID Oversight Committee Nomination Committees be activated. All of our standing committees conform with the Ralph M. Brown Act. There is no direct physical impact associated with appointments to these committees. And alternates for standing committees may be assigned by the chairperson if the need arises. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Jones. So I'm going to start with the Budget and Finance Committee. And I nominate Directors Reyes and Lineback for the Budget and Finance Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who that was. Okay, Director Danzel has seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay. For the District Policy Committee, I nominate Directors Reyes and Sloan. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That was Director Yearwood?
Secretary.
Secretary. Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. Think, you know, what do you have to do for me, guys? Change your titles on your Zoom screen and then I won't have to keep remembering.
I'll need IT to help me do that.
All right, a roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay, for the Capital Improvement and Park Construction Standing Committee, I am nominating Secretary Yearwood and Director Sloan. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Chair Lineback?
Terry, you're on mute.
You were. Oh, sorry. So for the PMRID Oversight Nominating Standing, Standing Committee, I nominate Secretary Yearwood and Director Danzel. Secretary Yearwood and Director Danzel. Did I? Okay, second by.
Secretary Yearwood.
Secretary Yearwood, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Director Sloan.
Hi.
Director Danzel.
Hi.
Secretary Yearwood.
Hi.
Vice Chair Reyes.
Hi.
Chair Lineback.
Hi.
Did you get the vote from Terry from the last one? Because I think you were muted, Terry.
I approved my, I approved it.
The number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, if I could beg your indulgence, Clerk Jones, would you list those nominees? Or those appointees for me now? Just, I have a little spreadsheet here and I want to make sure I didn't make any errors.
For the Budget and Finance Standing Committee, I have Vice Chair Reyes and Chair Lineback. For District Policies Standing Committee, I have Vice Chair Reyes and Director Sloan.
Yep.
For CIP, I have Secretary Yearwood and Director Sloan.
Yes. Okay.
And for PMRID nominating, I have Secretary Yearwood and Director Danzel.
Okay, thank you. That is what my spreadsheet says. I appreciate the sanity check. Okay, so now it is item I, Comments by Staff on Non-Agenda Items.
Thank you. Item I1 is the Districtwide Monthly Progress Report for January, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Hello again. Shall I sing my report this month?
Good luck.
Apparently, Mr. Recford loved my rendition of Happy Birthday like all the staff do, so I'm glad to hear that. So just wait for Monday. I'm going to have a real ditty for y'all. All right, so yes, it was quite the experience to go through the Board of Supervisors for public hearings. To get to an unfortunate majority no vote. But I am so proud. Of our efforts and our advocacy and our tenacity to do the right thing. And it didn't turn out the way that we hoped, but at the same time, there are still benefits to move forward with. So. You know, we will move forward. And already, we have one of those developers, master developers knocking on our door. The next day, asking for us to meet with them to move their entitlement paperwork forward. So. It's timely. And so we'll go with that. We hosted also in December, which seemed so long ago. Four small events over the holidays to show our appreciation for our staff. For their services and dedication to CRPD. So with COVID, we didn't do a large, you know, holiday luncheon or. Event where we wanted to make sure that we were careful and cautious. And so we did four. Kind of micro events with each of the departments. And so that was great. We pivoted as a team in order to appreciate them. And I appreciated everyone's efforts on the Pickle Committee to do that. The presentation tonight earlier about the year interview, Matt was, it was fantastic. And thank you for that. It, it really does. Mean a lot to look back on it and see how amazing we are. In producing things despite all of the challenges with COVID. So, I mean, we opened the pool. I mean, that's not just a one-year thing. This has been like a decade in the making. And so I'm just beyond proud of all of our efforts. So just to make sure that we're clear on what we did receive for Special District COVID-19 Relief Funds. We received fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars in COVID relief. And so what that was basically. There was a time where special districts were left out of relief funds, where, you know, cities were getting it. And some other municipalities were getting it, but special districts in essence were not. And so there were some advocacy efforts, there were letter writings, campaigns, and ultimately, they did pass some funding. To go through for COVID relief. We submitted what we had tracked and that equaled fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. We submitted that amount and they approved that amount. In looking at the list that Director Danzel was mentioning earlier. I was shocked that some of them may be requested like eight hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm like, wow. But I feel comfortable about the fifteen-eight. We can justify it. It is, you know, what we really truly lost and or tracked. For those COVID losses. So there's, there's a two sides of that story. One is I'm thankful that we got our recovery of what we expended. On COVID-related expenses. So that's nice. But we were open. When more places were not, we were. And we continued our services and we made it work. We didn't lay off anyone. So I'm super proud of that. And that list also does not reflect those that actually never even applied. So there are multiple agencies that are not listed, Special District Recreation and Park Districts, that maybe didn't. Be aware of that opportunity or whatnot. So anyway, I'm happy with the fifteen-eight-eighty-one. It's justifiable. If audited, we can understand and clearly demonstrate why that request was made. So it's a woo-hoo. But it's also a wah with the other districts that got like, I don't know, with the amount of money. So. Good for them. So we will be. As it relates to budget, in fact, so far, the operational spending plan overall expenses are under. Budget by eleven percent in comparison to ten percent last month, a one percent in additional savings. What's up? We're doing pretty well, but salary is under budget due to hiring challenges. So with COVID, with this new kind of mentality of workers. We are challenged with even the recruitments that we have out there, people applying and people wanting to work. And so it's a little different, definitely different than it was before. So you're starting to hear things like, you know, I just saw on the news, I think it was Noah's Bagel, all of the employees just quit. I walked out and there's this movement happening that we hopefully will not be a part of. So we are finding it very critically important to retain and keep the folks we have. And, and we do a good job about celebrating them and, you know, keeping them dedicated. But it is going to be a challenge for us to onboard staff going forward. So bear with us as we move forward. In this new kind of mindset of folks in the recruitment field. So. Also, our water and legal expenses, as you can imagine, are exceeding projections. However, the bottom line is within the total budget and not requiring a board amendment at this time. So we mentioned at the last meeting, the Total Compensation Study that we had approved. Staff have met with the consultant this past month and we are doing some internal work. In February, it is slated for this consultant to come to the board and their. Presentation will mostly talk about their recommendations for a list of benchmark agencies for the board to consider. For approval. So we can start going in the direction of comparing our job descriptions, our classifications. To those appropriate agencies deemed by what you all feel is appropriate, approved board list of agencies. That we should go after. So we're looking forward to getting that underway. I mentioned earlier that the Jackson Township Master Plan, so Manager Taylor has already attended a Sacramento County Planning Commission. On December sixth, and where the plan was to recommend for approval, the plan will now move forward to the Sacramento Board of Supervisors. For final approval and initial entitlement paperwork. So soon off the heels of that body of work, she is already moving forward and going to be responding to. The latest round of reviews. And we're back at the table with Sacramento County staff. And these developers, and now it's a different story. And so we'll see where this goes. And I'm excited to see. That we have great justification, great nexus study to support the fee. And we will keep you posted as to how this negotiation goes now with these tools at our fingertips. To justify what, what, why these need to be at this B level. We are going to also be receiving a presentation in February from City of Rancho Cordova staff. On the Rancho Cordova Little League Complex. So we've had our Parks and Recreation Director Jill and Laura Taylor. Meet with the city staff, their consultants, and the stakeholders to come up with this design and plan. For the Little League Complex, especially the Alstrom, of course, the Alstrom Park side of this complex. This will be seen as in February, a, an opportunity for a community outreach effort. So we'll work with the staff at the city to promote this topic at our next meeting in February. Giving it an opportunity for the public to comment about this design, this plan, as it relates to Alstrom Park. So there was some potential confusion and or maybe a, not a clear understanding. That this is not about necessarily the Little League complex as much as the impact it will have. On our Alstrom Park and that the neighbors need to be aware of this plan presented that way. Does that make sense? So in full transparency, we're, we're wanting to make sure that the public and especially that neighborhood around there. That may have an interest in this topic are aware of this opportunity to give us some feedback and some comments. So. Look forward to that in February. And then also. At this point, since it's getting so late here, I'm going to turn it over to our amazing Parks and Recreation Director Jill Muns.
All right. Good evening and Happy New Year. In the Parks Department, we were able to install an irrigation pump at Riviera East. So that work was completed and we're happy that the upgrades were made. So we have a more efficient use of our water system. So thank you to Jim and his staff for that. Also over at the Village Green, Patrick had mentioned, I think a couple of months ago. We were having issues with unwanted visitors over at the Village Green, hopping the fence and getting behind the stage area. And so Jim and his staff worked to secure that backstage area. People can still get back there if they want to, of course. But we've done a better job of trying to add a gate as well as additional fencing heights. To just deter our visitors from visiting the Village Green and getting back there and maybe doing things that they shouldn't be doing. So when you get a chance, head over to the Village Green. It looks great. In Recreation, the Hideout. Received a donation from Golden State Water Company. So we appreciate our friends over at the Golden State Water Company. We received five hundred dollars. And I know that Brandon and her staff are working to figure out what they want to spend that five hundred dollars on. It'll probably be some sort of Xbox system, gaming system, since our system's a little out of date. So, but they're still working on that. But we, again, we do appreciate Golden State Warrior, Cold State Warriors. Wow, that's a Freudian slip. The Golden State Water Company. I'm not even from the Bay Area. I've got no affiliate issue with any of the teams. Golden State Water Company. Over the winter as well, during our winter break, we had Camp Cordova. It was full with twenty campers. So we're excited to see that people in the community are excited about attending our Camp Cordova program. Again, we've, you know, made sure that we've kept our numbers reasonable within COVID guidelines. So twenty campers is the max we could take, but it was full. So proud of the staff for, for putting on a great program. And as you can see throughout your board packet, we have a lot of activities, youth and adult sports and programs happening. For the community to enjoy. I feel like Patrick, you know, mentioned that December feels so, so long ago. And we did have a special event in December. We had the breakfast with Santa. And it seems like it was forever ago. It was on December fourth, so it was the beginning. But we had breakfast with Santa. Again, another great event that NOSEC and the Recreation Staff put on. So we appreciate that. And everyone had fun at that event. And then at the Cordova Golf Course, just to give you an update, the Golf Course Driving Range Netting Project is still underway. Right now, we are waiting to hear back from Judge Netting. They're in the permitting phase of this project. Once they're able to secure the permit, then they'll move forward with the scheduled plan to. Add that new netting to the driving range. So that's my report. For this month, and then I'll go to the Board of Directors' Special Event Invitation Page. And there's only one invitation this month coming up in February. It's the Lunar New Year at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. On Wednesday, February second at eleven thirty AM. And right now, it's an indoor event. But more than likely, we will be changing that event to a drive-through, just so that we make sure that we're being safe. With all of our participants. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Anes, you have a question?
Ye- yes, I wanted to ask, as I always do, how are we doing with our concessionaire over at the golf course? Have we finally gotten it done?
No. And so we are still waiting for Beach Hut Deli. They're working through some processes. They've had some major road bumps. And we will probably know in the next couple of weeks if they were able to get over those road bumps.
Okay, in the meantime, my question here is. Are they paying rent? They're not at all?
Yes. Oh, yeah, they are. They are. All right. They're paying their lease payment every month on time.
Well, I can't wait to hear from you. There's a grand opening, our concessioner. That's been, and we're coming on, what, month, close to year?
It's almost been a year. Yeah.
Okey-dokey.
And Anes, we cannot wait as well. So I hope next month I have some fantastic news for everyone. But they do have, they have a pretty big room to get over. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey Jill, I appreciate you guys working on that irrigation system out at. Riviera East Park. It was, it was in pretty bad shape behind it. It was causing a big quagmire of mud. People would walk through it and you'd get almost sink up to their, to their ankles. And it's nice that we, we took care of that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other directors? I should have asked. No. Okay, so now we'll move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J1 is our Articles, Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have two articles, a press release, the two public hearing notices. We got a very nice letter from the Folsom-Cordoba Unified School District Homeless Student Services for our donation to that program. And then we have the Senior Center Newsletter. And then item J2 is your calendar.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, we have, we're going to item K, our closed session.
Thank you. We have three items in closed session this evening. Item K1 is a conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Rose Reyes versus Cordova Recreation and Park District, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number three-four dash twenty-twenty. Dash zero-zero-two-seven-seven-nine-seven-nine. Item K2 is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Cordova Recreation and Park District versus the City of Rancho Cordova, Sacramento Superior Court Case Number three-four. Dash twenty-twenty-one dash eight-zero-zero-three-seven-zero-five. And item K3 is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation. Pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9, number of potential cases, one.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to recess at this time, nine oh four PM to a separate Zoom meeting. Thank you.